Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, as this council gathers to do the work set before them, on behalf of our community, we ask that you would prosper the work, not only of their hands and their collective minds, but for the greater good of all the citizens. Grant them strength to see the projects begun, brought to completion. Grant them wisdom when initiating new projects, and as they set goals for the new year. Grant them resolve when negotiating all the challenges wrought by the pandemic, and the fear and uncertainty that afflicts us all. And Lord, as we approach a day of Thanksgiving, let us be mindful of all that we owe you, and with grateful hearts, may we praise you and be generous to others. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is 5:30 November 16th, 2020, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Rupert.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business on the agenda is the approval of the agenda this evening, and I will call on our acting city administrator, Bill Sawmore. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, thank you, your honor.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
One change for you, item number three under the consent agenda, the resolution setting
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a number of labor agreements to approve,
the IRP hearing for Rivers Edge Development is for December 21st, not the 7th. So, December 21st, we're doing that the same time as we have another hearing on a related
and so I will call on our HR director, Mike Hartwell. Good evening, Mike.
topic to that.
First item is a labor agreement with the LELLS group, labor group, L-E-L-L-S. Thank you, Bill. And with that, if there are no other changes, I would entertain a motion approving the
Good evening, your honor, and members of the council. It's very simple.
agenda with that slight change.
We look at items 1 through 5 on the resolutions, we are all, I'm asking your approval to
I'm Mike Nickerson.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Anthony.
approve those resolutions for three key items.
Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
One is the city's increasing sick time payout for post-retirement healthcare, which is
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
a program that all city employees participate in.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Employees with sick balances in excess of 1,200 hours at separation of employment will
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
be allowed to use an additional 10% with a max of $100 paid into their sick bank.
There are no public hearings this evening, there are no bids to order, petitions or communications. Next item is the consent agenda.
This was agreed by all members of the bargaining units.
There are 10 items on the consent agenda in our packets.
Number two, the city will increase, include vacation time, and we're basically extending
They're also on the board. If anyone would like to remove any of those items and discuss them individually, we can
out for longevity pay, 21 to 23 years of service, 180 hours, 24 to 26 years, 190 hours,
do that at this point. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
and 27-plus years, 200 hours. Again, that would be equal amongst all units that we bargain with, including our non-union
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
members.
Thank you, Caroline.
And then we did come to terms that we would agree to a 2.2, 2.25% wage increase that's
Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
effective mid-year. So, it's actually half that for the duration of 12 months, and that, that was a really nice point for us to all land upon, considering our difficulties this year financially. And with that, I am asking the council members to approve those three provisions in all resolutions presented.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? If not, I think we need to vote on these individually, correct? Yeah, so we'll just go one at a time. So, first one would be for the L-E-L-S labor group. Does someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll tell you, honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brett. Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next, we'll need a resolution approving labor agreement with the sergeants.
I'm Mike Nickerson.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Jim. Discussion, roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next, would we do the same for the labor agreement with the supervisors and professionals labor group?
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Caroline.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Tommy.
Yes.
Oh, go right to hey, Bert.
Yes.
Sorry, Krista. Tommy said yes, Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item 4 is a resolution approving labor agreement with the non-union employees. Who would like to offer that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item 4 is a resolution approving labor agreement with the non-union employees. Who would like to offer that? Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next, we'll need a resolution approving labor agreement with the sergeants.
I'm Mike Nickerson.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Jim. Discussion, roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next, would we do the same for the labor agreement with the supervisors and professionals labor group?
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Caroline.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Tommy.
Yes.
Oh, go right to hey, Bert.
Yes.
Sorry, Krista. Tommy said yes, Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item 4 is a resolution approving labor agreement with the non-union employees. Who would like to offer that? Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Harson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
That resolution is approved. And finally, resolution approving labor agreement with the Teamsters. Who would like to offer the, yeah.
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Hey, Bert.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
The resolution is approved.
Your honor.
Yes, Jim.
I'd just like to make one little thing. Mike, thank you very much for putting this all together. I've been here on the council for a number of years, and I remember times that we've gone into March and April of the next year and not had a contract, and doing some real battle with the, with the, with the unions and stuff. But Mike has put this all together the last few years, and it's, it's really nice to see that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would echo that, Mike. Thank you. Item number 6 is a resolution approving a conditional use permit for recycling salvage yard located at 1604 Wyron's Road, with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Brian, are you going to talk to this?
Certainly, and good evening, your honor. Yes, I can just give you a back, background, I believe the minutes were included in your packet from last Tuesday's Planning Commission meeting in regards to this conditional use permit. The Planning Commission is making a recommendation to approve with the conditions noted in the report. So, at this time, I'll just open up to any questions. Developer is here too, as well, to answer any questions any might, might have on this topic, so.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for the?
Once, once we get a motion and stuff, I want to make a statement.
Okay. Although, I think there's some people in the audience that may want to speak as well, so we'll try to get, let everyone speak.
I'll make a motion to approve the CUP.
Resolution, yep.
Resolution.
Got it, resolution. And we have a second, so we have a resolution and a second, approving that CUP on the table. Go ahead, Jim.
My, my understanding, when that was first brought forward, there was, in the plan, was to put up a fence or some trees or something on that, on the south end of the lot. I was over and looked at that today, and I'll tell you what, if you're looking from, looking back towards the north, from up above, it's, it's not going to be a pretty site, and I know that none of us would want that in our backyard. Now, if they put trees or something up on the south edge of that, which would get up high enough to where they can't see all the way out to the substation that's there, and it goes out into, into that area, but the land to the south of where this is going to be is much higher than where the land is where it's going to be. And as this stands right now, without the trees or the fence in there, I will not vote for it.
Thank you. Jim?
And I just.
Justin?
I just wanted to comment a little bit. I spoke with a property owner that had those same concerns, that's on the south side, and, and, you know, I think, you know, that was my understanding too, in the original plan. I think there was discussion at the Planning Commission about that. You know, I wasn't able to attend, and reading the, the Planning Commission minutes, you know, I can't disseminate what, what the overall consensus was, other than they, they moved the project forward with all that as a condition. But, you know, that would be my concern too, is, is not to, you know, stop the development of this future proposal, but to make sure that we accommodate with some sort of a buffer that would be reasonably expected to, to do. So, I think that's something maybe they could speak to.
Yep. Yeah, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, your honor, thank you. Say, my name is Tom Harrington. I've been a business owner in Fergus for 25 years. Prior to that, I worked for my brother in town here for 10 years. And as a small business owner, one of the worst things I'd hate to see is my son, my three sons, leave Fergus because there's no work, and to see my three grandsons leave because we don't have no jobs here. Because if they leave, me and grandma are going to be following up. And I don't know Ben, but my son has worked with him for a year, out at the dairy, cleaning up. And he says, anything he's asked that company to do, they don't hesitate to do a good job. So, I hope you guys take into consideration, small businesses are the backbone to this country. I only employ four people, but my son's got a kid, my oldest son's got three kids, and my youngest son rents a house in town here and buys groceries here. So, the worst sight I want to see is that there is no sales tax to support the senior citizen center and the schools in town here, and support getting these roads fixed and infrastructure, what we need. Now, he can, they can get some trees planted, so people don't have to see that, but you're going to see a heck of a lot worse. Recycling isn't going away. You can't outsource that job. They're good jobs, it's only going to get better, and it's going to bring more opportunity to this town, and that's what this town needs right now. Somebody's going to run a nice, clean operation. They do it all over the country. They just have to follow some simple rules that the city requires and the county. They'll have a nice, clean operation, and we'll have some more jobs, and there'll be more jobs that will follow along with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Ben, would you like to address the issue of?
I would, I'd like to, I had, my manager, I'd like to introduce Jake McCabe. He's just graduating St. John's here this spring. I want you to take a second to introduce yourself, and I'd like him to run this yard here in town, if it gets approved.
Good evening, Jake.
Good evening, your honor. So, my name's Jake McCabe, and, yeah, I'm a senior graduating from St. John's this year, and my plan is to manage, be managing the recycling yard in the spring. And I do see a lot of potential in it with the small business. I think it could grow the community a lot, and I'm here to start from the ground up with the entire project, and I could be here for a long time. I mean, bringing a family here and raising it and continuing to support the community. I mean, I'm from St. Peter, Minnesota, it's near Mankato, it's a lot similar to Fergus Falls, so it's my first time in the area, but I see a lot of potential and growth as well. And I think I could just do a lot for the community and bring in more workers as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake, and welcome to the community.
Thanks.
Ben, did you want to just give a little background or talk about the, the issue of the, the fence or the?
Yeah, the, there was quite a conversation at the Planning Commission, or the, and basically, it boiled down to, there's over 1,000 feet between that, those residents that are not in city, they're not in the city limits, they're outside of city limits, and the property. So, if, I don't know if we can pull it up, but the parcel is 40 acres, and we're only going to develop, right now, a scrapyard. The only CUP stands on the north half of the property next to the rail line. And the south half, there's, there's, some of the residents have, that's the north side of their property, they have a north windbreak, a lot of them do. There might be one that doesn't have very many trees there, but it doesn't make sense to have me make trees not in, on the property that I'm asking to put it on. I'm asking for the CUP on the north half, not even on the south half. We were, we didn't, I didn't come as developer to ask for a CUP on the south half of that property. I just wanted to make, and, and I, as I talked before, it's over 1,000 feet, but if you look at the edge of the residence, to where the edge of my south border of that CUP is, that's over three football fields. And, you know, we're, we're going to look, you know, it, it just blends right in, if, if you, you know, nobody wants to look at a substation, and I have a substation to the east of me. I have a railroad track with railroad that goes through to the north of me. I have an aggregate with piles of concrete right over there, and none of those are screened with trees. The city hasn't had that in their ordinance, and this, this is coming from left field, from a non-resident of Fergus Falls. I, I guess I've been working in the community for two years, I'm an owner-operator, I am not that big, and this is going to be a huge investment that I'm coming to town, and I'm putting most of my marvels in here on this piece of development, to be honest with you. So, I'd like to see, I've put all the cards on the table here, and, you know, I guess, I, I just don't see the point of planting trees, you know, I'm not going to, my operation's not going to look, you know, in, in, it's industrial area, so.
Thanks.
And, and I, I just want to make the, the point that the Planning Commission did. When they did the final roll call and the final vote, one of them stood up and said that, that they're not objecting that neighbor to put trees on his property. Nobody's saying he can't plant a couple trees.
Thanks, Ben. Just for clarification, Rolf, can I ask a question about, Ben mentioned the development of the north part of a parcel? Can we put conditional uses on parts of a parcel? Could, could further development in the south portion of the property have additional uses, or does that go with the entire parcel?
With the permission of the applicant, if the applicant wanted to just say, I'm comfortable limiting my application for a conditional use permit to the north half of my property, you can certainly have the conditional use permit limited in that aspect, or the applicant could say, no, I want it over the entire portion of the property that my application is about. So, if the applicant is willing to consent to it applying over just the north half, you certainly can proceed.
Sure.
Yes, I would just consent to just doing the north half.
So, did any development, did you call on the south half, would it require an additional process through the Planning Commission and through the city council?
Correct.
Okay. Bill, did you have, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was kind of going the same direction with that. If we look in the Planning Commission recommendation, it's, it came with, it started out as four, you know, conditions, and I'm just going to read through those, because condition number two was eliminated from that, which the last condition gets to what we were just talking about. But abide by all local, state, and federal laws pertaining to the use. Must plant and maintain two rows of coniferous trees spaced more than 15 feet apart along the southern boundary line, or have a fence of at least six feet in height along the southern property line. That was the one that the Planning Commission has removed, sending this on to you now tonight. Number three, hours of operation, no crushing or processing of materials shall, shall happen after 8:00 PM or before 7:30 AM. The site may be used for other uses, such as park, to park equipment outside of these times, as long as all other regulations are followed. And then number four, no expansion of the recycling use to the boundary toward the south is allowed without amending this conditional use permit. The use of the property for permitted uses in the zone is not applicable to this condition. So, that's going to what we were just talking about, how it is for that north half, and that's what the Planning Commission is sending before you tonight. So, the one, three, and four, so.
Okay.
Just thought that'd be a good reminder for us.
Okay, so, Anthony?
I would say just a couple of things, that as, as the activity is going to be taken in the northern section of this, of this property, then planting trees is, at this point in time would be kind of futile, and a waste of kind of the, the resources to do that. But, but as also, it, it depends if the concern is as much sound or, or sight. You, the, the state of Minnesota does have regulation that controls both of those as well, through the MPCA. So, if there are, you know, conditions that have elevated sound, then, you know, there are recourses that can be taken through the agency. You, and I agree, if we're going to set a precedence tonight by saying that any industrial facility has to be surrounded by trees, then that's exactly what we're doing. So, anything else we do in the future, you know, we would have to, we would have to do something similar. So, I, I think, you know, Mr. Carlton raises the point that, obviously, as he looks out of his neighborhood, he sees an aggregate, and he sees a utility station, you know, those are all things that obviously would be the same. But I, I think there are other recourses to a resident, you know, and unfortunately, Wyron's Road is, is not in the city, so they would have to go to the county. The other part of the recycling center is that, you know, they will, they will need, obviously, additional permits to operate, you know, which would probably be handled through the county. Trees also take a long time to grow to be effective. So, and, and noise actually travels, you know, generally up before it travels laterally. So, most, most sound goes up, and then it moves in the wind, and then it drops. So, I think, you know, you, just, just planting a few trees on the southern edge is actually not going to do a, a lot for noise, because mainly the prevailing winds are either coming from, you know, the west or the south. This year, the last two years, we've actually seen an increase in southerly winds, which actually would be an advantage to the residents on Wyron's Road, over, over typically where, where winds are coming from. So, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of this CUP. It, you know, I think Mr. Carlton has demonstrated, you know, not only has he done, obviously, demolition at the dairy site, but he also did demolition at the RTC. He's working, obviously, you know, through the dairy site with Otterdale Power, and we have not received any complaints about his activities. So, I think when he stands there and says that he wants to be a good neighbor and a good citizen, and, and applaud best management practices, you know, he's, he's actually demonstrated that. He does, he's doing that every day. So, I would support his application.
Thanks, Anthony. Jim?
I wasn't, I wasn't saying to put trees all the way around the whole thing, just, just on that south side, by, by Jesse's land there, so. And, and it's just sight is, is the only thing I'm talking about. I'm not talking about noise. He's higher than what all that is, and he's going to look right out over it. And you're right, he is, he is now looking at a substation there, and if it's a, a neat recycling, that's good, but most people consider it a junkyard, you know, where you get a bunch of old automobiles and stuff in there, and, and hopefully, that isn't what we, we end up with. I'm not, I'm not against the recycling that you want to do. I'm not against the business. It's just the sight of it from his place, and he's up higher, and he's looking right out over there.
Thanks, Jim. Let's go.
You have to be up?
Well, I know Chris McConnell, I was going to ask Jesse if you wanted to add anything, but Scott, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll go to Chris, and then if Jesse wants to add anything. So, Scott, go ahead.
Okay. The motion, as I understand it, then, has the three, three of the four conditions.
Yep.
And I don't sense that there's really any resistance to us approving the CUP. I don't see anybody really speaking out against the CUP as a, as a whole thing. It seems to be the question is whether we're going to have some trees or not. And unless I'm reading it wrong, just from the feel of the room here, it doesn't sound like anybody's saying, we don't want that, we don't want it, we don't want it. No, it's just, it's okay, we're happy to have this business here, in fact, we're glad to have this business here. Just whether we should have some trees or not. I think that's the gist of the big question. So, to that end, I would make a motion to amend, to add that condition back in for the trees, and if we can get a vote on that, we'll have an answer as to where this is going to go. Can I do that? I think we got to go on the first motion.
Yeah, you'd have to vote.
Unless, unless the author of the original resolution wants to amend it, that would be the way to amend that, I believe. Is that accurate, Rolf?
Well, you can make a motion to amend.
And then, we need a second?
Then you need a second and a vote on that, and.
Okay.
Then you need a second and a vote on that and you can amend it that way.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to amend the resolution to include the fourth item in the CUP to include trees. Someone like to second that?
I'll second it, but I'd, because I'd want to hear from the other Chris and Jesse before we...
So are we taking the first motion off the table?
No, we're just going to vote on the motion to amend your resolution.
But I don't want to amend my resolution.
Then, I believe they just voted down?
You vote against the amendment.
Yeah. I think, you know, it's, anyway, well, I mean, I think we have to consider what the cost is and whether or not, obviously, we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, well, we're going to vote on that, but before, I just want to clarify. Bill, when you read the fourth condition, did that include the, did the planning commission specifically state that it applied to the north part of the parcel? So is it already implied that it's going to, would require separate conditions for the south?
Yeah, the condition was number four, no expansion of the recycling use to the boundary toward the south is allowed without amending the CUP. The use of the property for permitted uses in the zone is not applicable to this condition. So basically, it only allows them to operate the recycling center in the northern part of the property.
As is proposed right now and any additional...
And then obviously if they wish to expand into the south, they'd have to come back to the planning and council.
Ben, is that the way you understand it?
Just, the planning commission didn't put that on there. There was quite a discussion of how that got there and that was done by a city, just as a discussion point by Darren, that's your city planner. So the city, the planning commission, the only reason we're talking about trees was Darren put just anything and everything on there as bullet points to discuss. And that motion was put before the planning commission. I exchanged the same, you know, things that I just, similar, and they voted it down and then voted to approve it without that condition.
Sure.
And so their views have already been carried forward with that position in before them.
Sure, but I was referring to the portion of...
Operations.
The operations of the north.
Yes, yes.
So that was clear at the planning commission, that was clear to you, that if any further expansion of operations into the south, it would require additional CUPs and additional conversations, correct?
Yes.
So everyone's on the same page with that, so we don't have to amend the motion and do that. All right, so we have a motion on the table?
What is it?
The motion on the table?
We want to hear from them, right? We're just trying to clarify.
Sure, we, yeah. Jesse, did you want to add? If you would, please step to the lectern and state your name and address for the record, please.
Jesse Doll, 1602 Wyron's Road. Yeah, I guess it's just unfortunate that we have a very nice house there and we have a really big open view of that whole site, you know, all the way across the site. The one, the couple of members that came out and looked, I think they kind of agree with that. It would be nice to maybe be able to do something about it. I guess it's not uncommon for there to be some sort of visual breaks around those types of businesses, I don't think. And yes, there is other industrial stuff around, but I just, a lot of people seem to forget that we live there.
Sure. Thank you, Jesse.
Sorry.
Thanks, Jesse. And Chris, did you have something to add as well? I promise we're going to get around to voting.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Chris McConaughey and I work for Otter Tail County as their solid waste director. And I just wanted to share a couple of things. This really isn't supporting or against, it's just some of the comments. The planning commission's closure, I think, stated that this, you know, project would also have to require compliance with other local and state and federal requirements. And just to comment on that, the MPCA does regulate sites for recycling. They're called processors and so there is another layer there. And then also at the county level, I did talk with Mr. Carlton and Mr. Yvaro on Friday and just acknowledged, you know, that the county is charged with solid waste ordinances and licensing and so that those ordinances go through the cities. And Mr. Carlton was aware of that and, you know, fully expects to go through that process with us. So that's just another layer that he'll have to go through. And, you know, just to comment on the private-public side of things, the county partners with private businesses to do recycling and our goal is not that we do all of it, so we're certainly welcoming other businesses into the county to do it. Part of our regulation is just seeing to make sure they fit into the overall solid waste plan and that they're following the ordinances that are in place here in the county.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Justin, do you have a comment?
Maybe just a question, a point of clarification, and I think to Scott's point, I want to be careful. I mean, I understand and sympathize with Mr. Doll in terms of, you know, having that view and not every town has a situation where it's industrial and there's houses right there and where there is, you know, the line of sight, it makes sense possibly to have some sort of a buffer. But I also understand Mr. Carlton's point, I want to be very clear, I'm not against your project or going forward, I just want to know if there's a way to split middle ground and because Mr. Doll's the only one expressing concerns about the line of sight, I mean, in, I think, the planning commission was 250 trees by 15 feet wide in two rows, I mean, can we only have the affected person that's here that's concerned? I mean, he wouldn't need 250 trees planted in the little spot where he's got it and I don't know how you do a condition based on one site, or does that open us up to concerns from the residents down the road? I don't know how that sounds out loud, but I'm just thinking, is there, I think, if there's nobody else here concerned about the line of sight, do we only have to, you know, really address the one concern? And to Mr. Carlton's point, he's done business in the town, he's a stand-up person, you know, and I don't know, maybe that's a deal breaker for you to plant some trees or not, I don't know, but I think to move this project forward, I think we can come to a compromise. I don't think anybody on this council wants to stop you and to your point, I mean, we want to support our local business and be friendly, but I think we also need to take into consideration somebody that lives there, you know, we, you know, yeah, they're not in the city limits, but we're in a sense going to be approving something that will affect their backyard and I just, you know, just so, you know, from my standpoint, it's, if there's a way to do both, I'd love to do that, I guess. Sorry for the lengthy comment, but...
Jesse's area there is really the only wide-open area looking out over that. The others have some trees planted back in there, so they do have kind of a break already. It's just the one area on his lot that, looking out from there that I saw, that it was really, it's going to stand out.
Caroline had her hand up here. Go ahead, Caroline.
Mine was more of a question for Ben, like, what, can you explain what your site might look like or what types of things you recycle and just kind of give us all a good rundown? I think it'd be good for the city to, or the residents of the city to understand what you're doing too.
So, the, yeah, my site will, you know, we, our sites, we're not going to be a parts dismantler. We're not going to take a piece off a car and try and sell it. We bring scrap in and, you know, some of it's market-dependent. Sometimes you want to sell that month, but there's not buyers, no matter if the price is low, we sell every month. It's going to, you honestly, you start to blend in once you're there. The reason the trees, once this body puts trees on a property, they're not just trees, they're something that somebody has to come and verify and that tree has more rights than everything else, you know, and it, you have to have basically a tree cop out there. And so it just gets really difficult if, in that scenario, and I guess, you know, there's going to be a shop, I think, I don't know if we can bring up that picture that shows an overview, but basically there's, the railroad comes through, I'd like to have rail access and be able to process scrap and load rail cars. I think the city's got to know what they want for an industrial area. If it's not me going in there, it's going to be somebody else, or you guys need to rezonate, or residential or something, you know, and I, I just, to me, it's on a personal note that I'm three football fields away from his property, on my own property, so I'm essentially my own neighbor by subdividing that piece in two. I just have, you know, if, just, so, can, I don't know where you live, sir, so I...
Oh, you're...
If you point that out, I actually don't.
And, you know, this house here is kind of in this climate, and yeah, when you're, when you're back there, you know, where you're talking about, kind of on a hill, but it's just, it's quite open, like I said, unfortunately, and right from our, you know, kitchen, living room, all that. And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to keep you out, I just...
So I've planted trees before.
Get together somehow.
And my water source and everything that my operation's going to be is literally over 1,000 feet to where these new trees are going to be at. Without paying exorbitant amount of money to have somebody truck water in there and drive along the tree line, it's just, I'm not in a position to grow trees down there. I guess that's all, I mean, if we got to...
Yep, thanks, Ben. Thanks. Tom, did you have a question?
So just to comment on the motion that's currently on the table, amend the CUP, I would not support that because we don't, I mean, we don't know how much this is going to cost and I don't want to set a precedent of we've required a tree line on this project and then other projects can come and say, "Yeah, well, we want the same thing." So I don't, I don't want that. We're glad to have Mr. Carlton come to town, excited about it, great jobs, good for the city. I'm not opposed to that in any way. I think Mr. Doll has a perfectly legitimate concern regarding his property. I would just, I would, I mean, I don't even know, has there been an attempt made to compromise? I mean, to meet in the middle somewhere? I mean, this just kind of burst onto the scene last week, we haven't had any time to have a proper discussion about cost or, I mean, how high would these, how tall would these trees have to be to completely block the site? I mean, we have to come bring in eight-foot trees, you know what I mean? So we need more time to discuss this, but I don't know if that fits into Mr. Carlton's timeline. So I would not vote to require the tree line in the CUP, but at this point, I would be inclined to, if it's needed to keep the project moving along on the timeline, I would be inclined to vote to approve the CUP with, and then ask Mr. Carlton to negotiate in good faith with his neighbors and try to come to some mutually agreeable remedy in the situation. So that's just kind of my thoughts on that. Just think that the timeline of the concern is relatively short as it relates to the timeline of the project, which is going to bring a lot of benefit to our city, absolutely no question about that and it's something we want.
So, all right, thanks, Tom. So we're going to move...
One more thing.
Couple of last comments and we're going to...
I think Mr. Doll would probably water those trees if you put them in down there. Is that correct?
I'm sure.
Scott?
One of the other things that was in the planning commission notes describing the kind of business that was going to be coming in, called for an area for people to be able to drop things off. Now, if I read it right, it was for appliances and stuff. Am I remembering that right? Was that part of the discussion?
I bought right down the city code and basically you have to have certain area and we designated that area on the map.
So the point is, it's a recycling business and a good part of it apparently is going to be for aggregate, things that are like rocks and dirt, but at least part of it is going to be for metals and other kinds of scrap that way. And that's how it's intending to start today. And five years from now, as the market changes, all of a sudden you've got an opportunity to move into something that's maybe not as pretty as a pile of rocks. And if we were talking about a typical scrap yard, for example, there would be a pretty universal agreement that having a fence around it would be kind of normal and kind of expected. And other scrap yards and salvage yards that you see anywhere, they all have fences around them or lines and truck trailers all put together to make a fence line around and that kind of a thing. So I think it's not unreasonable to look for having some kind of a visual screen. And the thing that this specifically does is it only asks for a line on the south end. It's not asking to order the entire property to screen everything. It's just taking the most residential area and adding a screen line in there, which I think is reasonable. It also doesn't define any high costs. It seems to me you could put 250 feet of tree line in there for a couple thousand dollars if you're talking little trees and in the time that it takes for your business to grow, those trees will grow and by the time it actually gets to where you've got something that people don't want to see, well, then the trees are big enough to maybe shade it or shrub. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request. And I guess I'll let you take it from there, Ben, to move a little along.
Thanks, Scott. All right, so we have, okay, do you have some last comments? Because we're going to, yeah, we're going to vote on this and a couple votes to take.
To say my final input, Your Honor, just as the person who'd be running the place and managing it and bringing my family in and hopefully staying here for a long time, I would just want to say, like, I don't want to make it a nice store, I don't want to throw in a big junkyard and have the whole community think, "Well, that's just where you bring your trash." We want to be able to make it a good place for people to come and help recycle and keep it neat and clean and not have to affect everybody in that sense as well. So that's all I had to say.
Thanks, Jake. I appreciate that, Jake. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table, on the floor, in a second.
I would just add though, it's not a couple of thousand bucks. Having just gone through a tree planting experience, it's a significant dollars involved in planting the right trees.
Sure, sure. So we have a motion, the first vote we're going to take is a motion to amend the resolution that's on the floor to include the provision that requires the tree planting on the south of the property. Everyone understand we're voting on first? We're voting to include that in the resolution. Everyone clear?
Can we, I know I can't speak right now, but on the other side, if you look at that overview, it's a forest on the west side of there. It would make sense if you're going to put trees. You see that red line? There's literally, you know, looks like 100 feet of trees in there, substantial trees. So if you could amend your motion to do, you know, the, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Southeast, southeast bounder?
Yeah, yeah, I don't...
Chris?
I don't know. From here to there, you know what I mean? That's easy. You just walk the talk.
I'd be willing to amend my question that way. I think that's the way I understood it, so my mistake, I guess, to say the south side, I meant the south side, I suppose. And I don't know that it was really...
Not the whole thing, just where those homes are.
I think that's fair and so...
He's the only one to ask, of course.
Okay. Brian, did you?
Yes, Your Honor, just for clarity, when we're talking trees, however the council votes, what size trees are we talking? Because there are significant price per unit trees when you're talking a four, eight-foot or even a sapling. I know saplings came out too at the planning commission during part of discussion. So just for clarity for staff, what size trees are we referring to?
It's also conifers, deciduous...
I did get a price quote on trees, can I read that?
Sure. And I know Brian got one this afternoon as well, I believe, but yeah.
I had a family member that works at one of the nurseries around here. So I asked her, what does a short pine tree cost, about a three-foot tree? She said $75 to $150, depends on the variety, blues are more expensive. So then I asked about a six-foot tree and she said, "Then we're looking more at that $275, $300 range."
Justin?
I feel like we're having a lot of good discussion on this, unfortunately, to Mr. Carlton, he's probably wondering what's going on, but is there a way? It sounds like we have one property out of the probably seven that are affected and he's the only one addressing this. To move this along, is there, and his concern about watering and it being on this far south where he's not even going to be inhabiting the property, isn't there a way around, or is this going to be setting a precedence where we put a condition in there not to exceed a certain dollar amount where he would grant putting trees in on Mr. Doll's property? So Doll will own the trees, they'll be on his property, he'll be watering them. If they die, it's on his expense to put in more, but allow him to move forward satisfying one property or that's concerning these trees, but then we move forward? I mean, is that reasonable to put within the condition or is that not something we can do?
You can't because he doesn't live in the city.
Okay.
All right. Shoot. But I like the sentiment.
Yes, Bill?
I'm sorry, we're trying to move this along and...
It's all right.
You know, like with what Justin is saying, sometimes we get lost in the topic here and looking and we have one person that's concerned and yes...
We can't see the forest for the trees.
I almost said that too, but I'm like, I got to stop. But also you do have another chance to deal with this if the business grows to the south, then that you'd come back before you again before you'd have to deal with getting any closer. So I was just sitting back here thinking about that, that this is on the north side. If there was any migration to the south side, you would have this before you again because then, so there's another opportunity to deal with it as well.
Yep.
But certainly, I liked what Justin was saying as far as are we talking about too much and getting it down to something reasonable?
But I'm, so I'll just say this, this survey knows, I mean, I'm in favor of them moving forward. I'm not necessarily in favor of putting a ton of restrictions on them moving forward. Mr. Carlton seems like a decent guy and maybe they can work out an agreement to get some trees for Mr. Doll. We can't necessarily put that in as a condition. If they move south and it sounds like we have some protection for those affected residents and being that he's the only one here, I certainly empathize with where you live, but I, I'm not willing to, you know, to the tune of 250 trees at $300 some dollars a pop, that's, you know, $70,000, $80,000 we're talking, to get eight-foot trees in place, that's a...
It wouldn't have to be that many trees for this property.
That's a big, no, but I don't think...
Hopefully the two of you can work this whole thing out.
Right, and I don't think we can stipulate based upon the discussion, we can say only the center section, I mean, if we're going to make him do a tree line, he's got to do that entire lower portion, which I'm not in favor of that either.
And it needs to be...
Yeah, let's just take the vote. I think, I want, let's take the vote. The motion is to add the condition that he plants trees on the south portion of the property. Everyone understand we're voting on first? The motion, roll call, please.
Hey, Burke.
Foster.
He fell asleep.
I'll have to come back to that. Quaney.
Yes.
Rupert.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Artson.
No.
Essison.
No.
Hicks.
No.
Bitch.
Yes.
Right. Krista, did you want to vote?
She dropped off a while ago.
Oh, okay, that motion fails. So we're back to the original resolution, which is what the planning commission suggested, the three conditions as part of the conditional use permit for the property at 1604 Wyron's Road. So we ready to vote on that? Scott?
For what it's worth, then the condition that says any additional... For the comment, for what it's worth, then the condition that says any additional expansion of the business to the southeast, come back for revisit. If we had a choice, I would eliminate that provision as well. Because I think if they've got a business going and they want to expand it, go for it. I don't see where that's really gaining us anything, other than now the ability to come back and have the same conversation about trees again, five years from now, when they want to expand. I'll go along with this, I'll vote for this CUP as it stands, but I'm going to make the point that having that additional requirement, that they need to come back just to be able to expand their business on land that they own, I think is irrelevant, and it shouldn't be in there.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, Brent?
Well, the reason I would disagree with that is, this young gentleman here has already said that they plan on running themselves a very clean and respectable yard. What if they don't? And they turn around and we have a problem with them, and they want to turn around and expand, then they're just going to expand. But at least this way here, if we stick with the original, and the guy does what he said he's going to do, then at least we got something to fall on, where he, we can say, hey, you know, we're not going to let this go down, you told us you were going to keep us a clean yard, and now we're going to have even more complaints. So, I mean, I would, I'm in favor of it the way it stands, and this way, Mr. Carlson can get his, you know, business up and going. And, but, this way here, it keeps him in check as far as keeping a nice, clean yard, where we don't have to worry about this in the future.
Thanks, Brent. Alright, with that, we have a resolution on the floor. Roll call, please.
Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnesson.
Yes.
Essison.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish. Yes.
That resolution
Hopefully, hopefully you guys can work something out.
Thank you for your time, both of you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Jake. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Jesse.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, other Ben.
Alright, item number seven, is a resolution initiating public improvement 5336, the Wyron's Road extension and approving and authorizing staff to execute the developer agreement for the installation of the city street. Brian Yvaro, good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members again. Yes, pursuant to the topic we've just been speaking of, for the purchase of the Port Authority property located in North Wyron Road, the buyer has willing to enter to the attached developers agreement. This was discussed at the Port Authority and introduced. This is the installation of a city street. The reason it's becoming before the council is because this street extension will be publicly owned. City staff internally are prepared to plan specification for this extension. Generally consists of excavating common material, placing, compacting, suitable common material, installing six inches of class five, over 18 inches of select material. The proposed street width is 28 feet and approximately 430 feet in length. There will be a cul-de-sac constructed at North Theremis to facilitate emergency vehicles and turnarounds. The extension of city utilities is not included with this, however, we have been evaluating and discussing potential options, if I can deem benefit for the public good, with Carlton Companies. I want to note that's also included with the development contract, prepared a little exhibit. This extension will also provide an access to another Port Authority-owned property that currently does not have access. I have the PIN number, but it's generally to be located due east of the proposed street extension. This was previously plotted, part of the Progress Drive development. Like noted in developers agreement, if there's any questions, the developer adjusted the purchase price to cover the cost for the construction of this street extension, and is proposed to be completed October 1st of 2021. So at this time, I'm requesting initiate public improvement 5336, the Wyron's Road extension, and approve and authorize staff to execute the developers agreement for the installation of city street.
Thank you, Brian. We can do that through resolution, one resolution, would someone like to offer that? Thank you. Anthony?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Further discussion or questions for Brian? Yes, Scott?
I believe you said that the city utilities are not included in the current plan for this street, so how is this property owner going to get their water and seal or anything?
It's not going to be served, we would permit, you know, individual and well-service like we do, just based on availability of the services, because the current systems, they would have to extend it considerable amount of distance. We've evaluated that when we looked at the initial special assessments to extend the street all the way to the, to the far north of railroad tracks, that was a component. But like I know, it was accessibility and the cost, pretty cost prohibitive to extend it. However, as a developer, we've been, like you said, talking about dialogue. If we are, if they are going to be looking to have water service, it's a benefit to them, but it's also a benefit, let's, for instance, the water main, for our ultimate service, our ultimate water system map consists of extending 24, 30-inch water main to the north, and then eventually keep on going north beneath the railroad tracks as development occurs. Now, if we can similar amend this developers agreement, there's a benefit for him, and also a benefit for the city, however, we have not had those discussions at this time.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Harper. Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $11,926,850.38. And if there's any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director, Bill Sawmore.
I'll offer that.
Otherwise, okay, Jim, offer a resolution to pay those bills.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Caroline.
I suppose there is one comment.
Okay.
It's $12 million, and our city administrator's not here.
I'm going to answer that. No, within this resolution, it comes, this probably is one of the largest ones we've ever done. And it's due to the refunding of bonds. The city council approved authorizing the 2020A bonds, which are refunding six of our outstanding bond issues, saving us about $568,000. So within this, just about $12 million resolution, we have $7,625,000 that is paying off those prior bonds. So we got the proceeds in from that bond issue, now tonight we're paying them off to pay off the old bonds, to get those savings. Then, you know, about $2.5 million is in there for our regular annual semi-annual principal and interest payments, so. And that's larger, too, because it's the principal and the interest. In the summer, we just pay the interest portion, so that's why it's so large this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. And with that, roll call, please.
Quamie.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Yes.